Test.
All right, this is gonna be a good, good guy Wednesday, I think, my neighbor. Gives a lot to, you know, the Charles.
And, and the city clerk properly writes down the minutes.
We can't till we have a forum.
Can you make that happen?
Yeah.
Not without two more.
This is, this is not our territory.
Yes.
She's, 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 I know it's a small.
Where you got? Richard is.
Okay, okay. Anybody else?
I don't see anyone else. He wasn't there. You know. He doesn't have tomorrow's. Hundred, hundred percent.
I'm a god somewhere, right?
Hey, hey, hey. Interesting gentleman today.
One more.
Sounds like he.
A spring.
Nice, man. Pick up on my.
He's wearing that.
Pulling it out, this is the first one I learned. No.
Have a dasher in time.
I wish, I had that kind of mind. Thank him. Okay, yes, it is. Already put it on a pad, I didn't know where it would be. Okay.
Seriously, you came by.
I hope they have a lot of air. In July, I'll play.
My buddy didn't wanna wear anymore.
I just say make it.
No, it's very safe, no, my buddy.
Yeah.
He's, he's kind of like twelve.
Clearly, we're not on the committee.
No.
Never been in this.
No.
We could hold these.
Richard, their brains good, Troy?
Yes, yes. Very good. That's all, must feel good.
You wrote strawberry.
Yes.
But they gotta be coming down.
They're coming down big, they pretty.
Bozeman's already got there.
Yeah.
Setups up.
Yeah, we, we, we been doing hours in the boxes. And so, yeah, Gene has got some prettiness.
Go to your email.
Yeah.
Your regular email.
Scram on over.
So, the goal is, who gonna be the first one in, who gonna be the last one?
Blood pressure anyway.
Oh, you mean blood pressure? You ain't gonna be getting it up, I guess.
Take those in the morning, we're fine.
I can't help you get it up, now bringing it down.
It's the back down part, that's the magic. I got plenty factors in my life to help me get it off, I don't need help.
No, you don't, man, you just, the guy is relaxing, Ruben. He'd be out on.
I check.
Which meeting was that, I missed it.
No, no, he went to either gavel, he went to either gavel.
Really?
Yeah.
Either.
Since you did that, he'll.
But I just had to feel nice.
Good afternoon, it's five oh three, April the fourteenth, twenty twenty five, and I would like to call the Rocky Mountain City Council Committee of the whole meeting to order. First of all, I would like to thank our guests who were with us today. This meeting designed as a workshop for council members to receive, review, and discuss information presented by city staff. Only staff and committee members are allowed to speak unless special permission is granted. I will remind citizens, there is an opportunity at each council meeting to speak before the council during the public session portion of the meeting. And at this time, I would like to turn this meeting over to our city manager to proceed with business. Mr. Barney?
Thank you, sir. I've placed on your consent agenda for the regular meeting that will take place at seven o'clock. The first amendment to the Halverson purchase option agreement. And I don't, just wanted to take this opportunity to explain what that is, in case you haven't taken the time to look at that. It really does just two things. One thing is that it extends the inspection period by thirty days for a total of a hundred and fifty days now. And the second thing it does is it has us agreeing to impose a deed restriction on the adjacent tract of land. And that restriction would prohibit a grocery store or supervisor. I think, I think I included a map that still be looking at.
Yes, you did.
Use the property here. So, any questions about that, just, just wanna let you know what that does. It's pretty simple.
Would that restriction be applicable if there was not a Publix at that site?
If it's not a Publix, well, I think they have language that says it would not, but I would imagine we can make it say that.
I think if, if something did not happen, or if something, say there was a grocery store there, and then for economic reasons or something that it. Was no longer, I would hate to restrict.
Yeah.
That in perpetuity because of, unless there's language that says that.
I think there's language that says if, if I don't.
Yeah, well, the option expires, I guess, at some point.
I'm talking even if the option is exercised, but there's no Publix there.
I, I got you.
And, or there's a Publix there and, for whatever reasons, economic reasons or whatever it may be, it closes the stores. You have another, the adjacent land that we're talking about, there was a grocery store that happened and economic. It, it just, it just needs to occur, we, we don't need to restrict it in perpetuity, in my humble opinion.
I think they talked about it being during the term of the Publix lease.
Okay.
Publix has, has, apparently there's a lease agreement between Halverson and Publix for it, so. I think this is talking about the, the restriction applying during the term of that lease, so I don't know what the term of that lease is.
Okay.
Along with. Any questions about that? Okay, to move on to the next.
Ah, yes, sir.
The Parks and Recreation Department has completed a master plan for the Stiff Talbot Park. And what that plan does, paved the way for seeking grant funding, I think, I think you've seen how we've done this before. It's on the consent agenda for your approval, but wanted, I'd love to take this chance to show what's involved in that proposed plan. So, I'm gonna call on, let's see, on Joel, and then to explain what this does.
All right, thank you, Mayor Proten, Mayor, Members of the Council. As you know, I'm Joel, Parks and Recreation Director, and we're here today to just give you an update on Stiff Talbot Park master plan. We're asking you to adopt here at the next meeting. And then what we're gonna be doing is bringing you some grant opportunities at the April twenty eighth meeting, in hopes of getting grant funding for Stiff Talbot Park. So, first of all, we'll just go ahead and start, we'll do the next slide, which is saying, thank you. We've done this, this will be our third time in about five years, in two thousand and twenty, we came to you with hopes for Battle Park renovations, we were able to complete that. As of last year, about one point two million dollars, we were able to get in grant funds to renovate Battle Park, that project's complete. And two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three-ish, we came to you with the idea for Sunset Park renovations. We're ready to give one point one million dollars in grant funds for Sunset Park. Those renovations are currently ongoing, we hope to have them done by the fall or late winter of this year, but that project's going well. So, we're here with our next stop on our, our, our grant quest, which is really Stiff Talbot Park. So, if you know anything about Stiff Talbot Park, it used to be two parks named after two different people. Tom Stiff is a one 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 veteran, came back to Rocky Mountain with schools and the post office for a long time. Upon his passing, a park was named after him in the fifties. The other, the other park was Mary D. Talbot Park, she was a citizen of Buffalo, New York. She was actually asked to come down as a member of NACW to try to talk to the women in Rocky Mountain, start a chapter here. They were able to do that, they named the chapter after her, and that chapter was responsible for really turning the park into one of the first parks for blacks in Rocky Mountain, and was named Talbot. So, basically, in two thousand, in the early two thousands, those parks were combined into one park, Stiff Talbot Park. A lot of that was for grant purposes, to give it its cheer funds, because the park was devastated by Hurricane Floyd. So, since then, that park has seen a lot of use and is in need of some updates. So, like we do with any park of the past five years, we go out and seek public support. So, we held three public meetings in the month of February. That, you know, we do our normal, put it out to mail all the houses within a certain radius, put it on social media, try to get as much public input we can get. And when you come to the meetings, we have a list of storyboards available for you to tell us what you want at the park. So, the orange dots represent the number one car you have at the park. You get one of those, and then you get five or six yellow dots to figure out what do you, what do you, what else do you want at the park, what's important to you. Very basic public info, but it really does help us isolate what, what public wants, and it helps us as we target additional funding to go after grants. So, we've got these boards here, if you wanna see them, but that's an example of one that you have there. We actually had really good participation, we had over fifty people show up at these meetings. It's about the same we had for Sunset Park, which for Parks and Rec Public Input Meetings is pretty good turnout for us, and we were happy with that. This is kind of our activity board results, so basketball score very high, there are basketball courts out there now, they're, they're in need of repair, cracks and years of going underwater. The restrooms, there are restrooms out there right now, but they're currently only open about three months a year, just due to not being able to open outside of the summer. And you can see there a list of what everyone said was a problem. After this, we kind of develop a plan, and we go out in the public and tell them, you know, here's what we're thinking we should be. We met with the Downey's Partnership for Children in early March, we went to the Rocky Mountain Planning Board, the Neighborhood Presidents Association, and the Martin Luther King Jr. Commission. All in the month of March, just to tell them about our park plan, what we'd like to do there, and together they're. It shows that the public buys in, it helps from a grant perspective, and it just helps get the word out for what we're trying to do at our park system. So, really where we're at now, David, our, David's with Griffin Grant Works, he's our great consultant on the project. He's put together a pretty intensive park plan for Stiff Talbot, it looks at the cost of renovation, it talks about a site plan, the sustainable. Stiff Talbot is right by the river, so we know it's gonna go underwater several times. There are things we can do out there, there are things that we can't do, and then we wanna start targeting grant applications. So, we're fairly certain we can target one to one point two million dollars that we can accumulate over the next year if we're successful with these grant applications, and we feel like we will be. Battle Park, we were the number.
Number one.
Number one in the state, Sunset Park, we were in the top five, so we score very well. You scoring is part of it, the other part is political, so from, we can't control the political perspective, but from a scoring perspective, we do everything we can to try to prepare ourselves to get funded. So, these are some of the things we're gonna target, Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, we can go five hundred thousand dollars for that one. You will see an application on the next Saturday, April twenty eighth, City Council Agenda Height for that grant. We've got the Land and Water Conservation Fund, we typically target anywhere from half million dollars for that. There's a Trails Program Grant will target, our main Greenway Trail System runs through Stiff, connects all from MLK all the way across the river. Can get you over in Battle Park and Sports Complex. And then the Department of Environmental Quality, a foundation for the Carolinas and early grants we've had success with, and we feel like we can target for Stiff Talbot as well. So, if you go to the last slide, that's the handout David gave you, which is really just a slide of what our park plan would be, and a breakdown of projected costs. So, we're looking at, with any grant project, you have to have new items, like items, and renovated items, so that list is broken down. Public art wouldn't be a part of the grant process, because they, fun public art, that's something the city will take on, it's something we've seen in our master plan process. People will enjoy public art, we're gonna continue to add it to our trail system. Sand volleyball, fitness exercise stations, tennis pickleball facility, two ports out there. Basketball courts, of course, are very popular, picnicking. The restrooms, we're gonna upfit where we can keep them up to date. Playground, a new playground out there, that playground I put, that is on the smaller side for that size of park. We want to increase the quality and ability of that playground out there. And of course, we'll continue to replace our Greenway Trail, so our Greenway Trail is, we just replaced the Battle Park section, we're replacing the Sunset now. So, this keeps us in line with the Greenway Trail renovation. While the canoe kayak launches, because the river does run through Stiff Talbot, there's actually two piers out there right now, we'll renovate one of those piers. The best spot for fishing in that area. And we have alternates that we can look at for future dates, we can't knock it all out in one swoop, but there were things that people mentioned, dog park, camping areas, that, that we'll look at for future dates. So, in a nutshell, this is kind of the plan that we're looking to target. When we ask you to adopt this park plan, it doesn't tie any city funds to it, so if we get funded from the grants, great, if we don't, we're not able to do it, C I T plan, we can always target going for the grants again next year. So, really what your approval does is just shows that you've seen the plan, that you support the plan, but it doesn't tie up any of our future dollars in it, as a. I will take this time, the last, the last part is actually just floodplain map, just to kind of show you, like a lot of our parks, we're in flood, floodway or floodplain, so we have to be mindful of what we can do. And now I'll answer any questions you have here.
So, thank you for your presentation, Joel. Now, when you say the park, is that, the park is the one directly behind BTW?
So, when I say Stiff Talbot Park, when you come across the river on the wooden bridge.
I meant the playground piece, I'm sorry.
The playground piece would be, actually, both playground pieces will go away, you've got the one right by the river that's way beyond its useful life, and then you got the main one behind the community center building.
All right.
They would both go away, and we would offset that with a larger playground behind the building.
Okay.
So, that one by the river, that was a great place to put playground thirty years ago, but you don't really put it two feet off the river nowadays.
That's why I asked, but.
It would be in the location of the main one behind the building.
Okay.
Councilman Joel?
Yeah, so, I guess, there's, with, how do we make stuff flood proof that can, if it do flood, it can withstand it, if there's any?
So, a lot of prayer. That's the best one. No, but really, what we try to do is we want our parks to be sustainable, so it's kind of like Sunset Park, we love the tennis courts at Sunset Park, everyone loves the Sunset Park tennis courts. We know they're gonna flood, okay, so we have to be prepared for when that happens, pressure wash and give them back in shape. We're not gonna be able to find thirty acres, it's not in the floodplain for our park properties, so really, it's a matter of what it really limits you is building wise, and, you know, what do you call it, impervious.
Impervious, sorry.
Circuses, so from a park perspective, we can make it work, it's just understanding, like I said, we had, the tennis courts, we used to have tennis courts out there, those tennis courts got old and the crowd, we had to get rid of. Well, in the public input process, people talked about wanting to have tennis courts and pickleball access. Currently, we don't have any of those courts on the Edgecombe County side, it's all on the Nash side, so that does fit a need, is it in the best location? No, but a lot of our park properties are on the river, so we just have to be prepared for it. But they really make it to the point now, where you really can't do anything in the floodplain, depending on where you're at, that's gonna waste money, you just have to be prepared to, to know when high, high water events happen, how can you, how can you best get everything back in shape.
Councilman Knight?
Is it a line item, or could a line item be added in for property acquisition? When you look at the master plan, there's some, I'm looking at from single family families. They used to be homeowners, but I think they're all in states now. Yeah, I feel that should be incorporated within this master plan to make it complete, but we can have an offline.
Here we can, and from a, from a grant perspective. Land acquisition is typically a different pot of money, but from a, from a overall planning perspective, in our overall Parks and Recreation Master Plan, we talked about land acquisition, and you know, to extend our system, we're trying to do that with the trail system, that we're trying to get out, we're five right now. So, there are some, there, there are some plans we have to talk about, it's not specifically in this plan, but we can, we can look at it.
Because if we're gonna do a Stiff Talbot Park master plan, why are we doing that piece? If we need a set of pot of, a different pot of money to do that. I think now's the time to do it, why are you doing this master plan? But I can straighten it. Thank you.
Councilman Blackwell?
The comments I have were similar. As far as program, great, great plan, by the way, you all doing a fantastic job all across the whole city, so thank you for your work. Are we planning dedicated programming efforts for, as the upgrades of the park, are you doing something differently in how to use that park in a more sort of a managed type of way? And I'm just thinking, you got BTW, which we are putting considerable resources in major uplift, and I'm assuming we have new programming that's attached to that as well. Will we be doing the same thing with Stiff Talbot, or is this more passive for people?
You know, we kinda, we kinda look at it all together, so one of the reasons we targeted Stiff Talbot for this is business renovations that are being done at the gym, which shows we're already improving the area from us, you know, city's perspective, and this is augmenting that property. The gym renovation, our staff is already working on as we open that, to have more activity going, more planned programs in activity. You know, the community center, there's talk about renovations and replacement of the community center as well, of course, we see it kind of like how we saw South transform, when South reopened in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, to where there was a better targeted, programmed perspective. So, yes, that's, that'll go along with the gym and community center renovations, a lot of use of the park will be passive, and that people can go out there at any time and, and use the park. But it, it is also a, a good thing to have when you have a gym and community center on top of it, to be able to better utilize that. So, our camps need a book of team Washington Community Center, they already utilize the park, they will continue to be able to utilize the park. Like I said, even having, you know, sand volleyball, the tennis courts, the football courts, you know, now we'll be able to, you know, run a local league out there if we want to, have those amenities there, so, yes.
And so, and now what, and if we are doing that, which I'm excited to hear, I would advocate for more off-street parking, because parking becomes challenging, you know, especially if you got baseball going on down, and soccer at the bottom of the hill, you got the gym being used. You know, you got activities taking place in the main, and everybody's fighting for parking spaces, and you cannot park on Virginia Street, you know, accidents and tickets, so. I would advocate for, you know, some opportunity to acquire property to create some off-street parking. Thank you. Great plan, I fully support it, and I talked to the Stiff family, and his grandson has his name, by the way.
Yeah.
Lives in Raleigh, and I'm quite excited to hear it. Thank you.
You have some more?
Also, Joel, I wanna, you can get word back to BTW staff and let them know, it's greatly appreciated what they do with special needs, the prom was beautiful, a grandmother called me who's raising special need grandson, and she, this is their first year going, and she talked about how. He looks forward to going to BTW during the day, how they do so many activities for them, so. I guess anything that we can do as a council to help that special need population of BTW, please let us know, man, it's a beautiful thing, and she was just excited for the prom. She said, she's just happy that he gets to know what it feels like to be around people that have those special needs like he do, so tell them, man, keep doing what they're doing, and we appreciate it.
Well, if you haven't seen your pictures on Facebook, they're, they're really good, it's hosted at Imperial Center, great job by staff, last week, they also host spring games for special needs in the school system. Went really well, so our staff does an outstanding job trying to serve that population, two really good events last year, last week, so I'll definitely pass along the appreciation.
Joel, with the two major grant applications that you're wanting to submit to Raleigh. Timeline wise, if everything falls into place and they have a completed application, when do you expect to possibly hear of?
So, for.
Good news.
Parks and Recreation Trust Fund deadline is May, we typically will, there'll be a hearing in August, that, August twenty-second, that we will attend. Never hurts to have an elected official, if anyone wants to join us, but that, but that's when they'll announce whether people are, are funded, okay? From that point, Stiff typically starts about a three-year window, when you can have the grant application complete. So, with Sunset Park, we're ahead of the game, we'll probably finish Sunset Park in two years, Battle Park took a little bit longer, but, you know, if we can start renovations at some point in the fall or winter, you know, we're looking to be done by twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. Because honestly, what we wanna do, being in two counties actually helps us, where, you know, they look at geographical locations, so this is an Edgecombe County site. So, in the next, the next pool of applications, we can go on a Nash County site, and we're not necessarily competing against ourselves. So, we try to, we try to look at that as, as we target spots, so, but we're hoping to hear from by August on Part F. Land and Water Conservation is a different ballgame, they haven't laid out that timeline, they're a little bit behind on that. But typically that's.
Well, that's through the National Park Service, so it's going to be through the administration, but it is tied, tied into the offshore drilling leases. And so they're really, as they promote those, the administration promotes those, promoting LWCF. The schedule had gotten drawn out, but we anticipated being condensed. But that'll probably be announced later in the same year, this year.
Any other questions? It's a nice project, well put together, and we're excited about what's hopefully will happen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
We, our next agenda item is a closed session, and, but, Mr. Manager, I've been made aware, Jenny Moore Butter is this here? And our closed session might take some, some time, but maybe we can give, give you a few minutes, ten, fifteen minutes max to whatever questions you have of us. And I just learned about you being here just before this meeting, so I don't know really more about why you're here. Help us out, okay?
Okay.
Yes.
Do you want me to jump in?
Sure, yeah, if you, if you want to start us off, that might be good.
Well, you want to stand up and run into the group?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, City Council members. So Jenny Moore Butter is here to respond to any questions that the group may have. Last week, when I was talking with Peter, he said that there may be some questions in regards to the presentation from the council retreat, and that members of council maybe wanted to follow up in regards to some questions or concerns for any of our efforts moving forward with the homeless initiative. So just wanted to have Jenny here to respond to any questions that you all may have.
Well, Jenny, thanks, thanks for being with us again. It was a great presentation down in Wilmington. But I think personally, if you recall, I mentioned about let it be more of a regional concept.
Right.
Come up with a new name or some other identity so we can get Nash County, Edgecombe County on board. And I think, speaking for myself, and I think maybe Councilman Daughtry, we, we really would like to hear of, of efforts being, being made to talk to the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners, the Nash County Board of Commissioners. So that's, that's the question that I have.
Okay, okay, great. Well, and we, we heard you, first of all, thank you for letting me speak to y'all again and be here. At the retreat, we heard what you all said, we appreciated your feedback very much. So since that time, we have been working on what you had suggested. We have had a preliminary meeting with Nash County leaders, staff leaders, with the hopes to speak to the county commissioners, that, that is, has been put on the table. We got a good feedback and response from them. We also have a meeting set on May seventh with Edgecombe County leaders, kind of with the same concept. I think what we heard from you all was maybe to present in a similar, similar way to what we did in Wilmington, but obviously to speak more to Nash County and Edgecombe County specifically. We thought our first steps would be to meet with the leaders there, talk about what we're, what we were looking to do, and to work to get on calendars at that time. We also heard maybe Nash County Hospital or UNC Nash Health potentially. And we want to, what we know and what I know from my work with United Way, there is a lot of overlap of what the hospital is experiencing and what we see in the community. So we've got that in the works as well. I think from our perspective, just the urgency of what we're seeing in our community around homelessness is big. We did not want to not be moving forward with this, so that's why, you know, for me to be here today and tonight, so we can try to push, push this forward. So I guess, you know, from our perspective, we, we hear you, and we want to just keep moving forward with this.
Well, thank you for all your efforts that, that you're making, have made, are making there. I think it's got to be a collective, joint effort by the whole region, and I'm speaking again for, for myself.
Absolutely.
And we need to know what each county is, is willing to do because we just can't fund it all by ourselves, and I think that was expressed in Wilmington.
Absolutely, we certainly understand that.
Any other council members have, have questions?
I'll listen to every question, but I do agree with Mayor Pro Tim Harris that, you know, want to see some movement from, from the other so-called partners. Actually, we all have skin, and it should not be the sole responsibility right now. And repeating myself and probably repeating what Mayor Pro Tim just articulated, you know, really the social aspect, from my perspective, falls mainly on the counties, and they have more resources. But I also want to see them, we're talking about a great sum of money, but they're, you know, it's a, the need is great, recognize it strongly. And, and I think, before I feel comfortable with it, I'd like to see what the county's reactions are. Because, I, I mean, I'm not going to make, make words here, they, they need, they need to step up. They just, they need to step up. And I, and if, I feel as if the city of Rocky Mountain takes a lead on it, then there's not going to be much pressure for them, frankly, to step up and, and work with their budgets, or even work with some grants. I don't, you know, I don't know how it can work from a county perspective. The big thing that's being asked from, from us, and it's the easy part, except for we got a lot of needs of money. And I don't know how the rest of the council feels. Because I honestly, when, when y'all came at the retreat, I wouldn't, I didn't pick up about the need, well, no, the need of money, but coming so quickly with an ask. And that, that was, that's somewhat news to me. Maybe I missed something, maybe I was zoning out or something at that trip, but.
And I think, I think again, because we are seeing such an escalation in the need, in the needs of the community, we felt like, you know, it was prudent for us to keep moving forward. We, we know this is, this is, what we've asked is something that obviously requires money. But we know that we need to get going with this because this is going to, you know, the plan that we laid out to you all, as you know, has kind of the three tiers to it. The first tier is essential for us to understand and to be able to ask for larger grants. And so it's going to take year, you know, years to kind of get this going, and we feel the urgency is so strong. And we, and I, I, we appreciate, we absolutely want partners in this, and we, we know that that is, is what we need. We just felt like we can, we, we have to keep moving forward with this because the urgency is, is so strong.
And so, if you've got a five hundred thousand dollar ask, what would the counties, I mean, what, what, what are you going to go to with the counties? You may not want to tell us right now, you know, maybe give it away for you to hit there, but is that the total ask that, that you, that you're looking for? Or is this, you know, the total amount that you need to get started? You just mentioned getting started, so, you know, if it's, if it's a total of five hundred thousand dollars, can we split that up somehow with, with our partners?
Right, and we have not laid out the ask for the county specifically. If, if you remember in our tiered plan, it was, we needed more than that to really execute what we're, what we want to do. And, and we're hoping, obviously, the counties would jump in and help because the five hundred, it would not take care of those first two prongs. I mean, the first prong, we were looking at two fifty initially because of just what we think it'll take to get a really good plan in place, to get a development plan in place, because this is going to take outside dollars beyond what we know the, the city or even the counties could put in. So we haven't laid out the specific ask. We have, you know, we've had the preliminary meeting with Nash County, but that, that's where we, you know, not been that much time since our meeting in Wilmington.
Is there any collaboration with the shelter and toll booth?
That's a good question. We, I've, I've spoken with Sister. We need to ask for that more actively, but I think that's an excellent point. You know, I think that's part of bringing the coffee and bringing more people into the coalition. But, but yes, there's been some preliminary, but we need to take a, a deeper dive with, with that organization. Good point.
Mayor?
So I think what you're seeing and hearing is not so much resistance on, on trying to help at all. I think what you're, what I have heard when I've polled, we've talked, and, you know, sidebar, we got nine million dollar budget, we got a, you know, a gap that we've got to close. We do have some state funds that we had previously allocated that maybe would be eligible for this. But homelessness was a tertiary priority, at least when we allocated, when we suggested this is what we wanted to get covered, which doesn't mean that council might not consider changing that, but it's going to require a lot more conversation than just a pretty quick decision. And I think that's at least some insight, maybe perhaps where, you know, my conversations have been, and I think the thought process is.
Sure, sure.
And there's no question it's an urgent need, and I've had a chance to meet with leaders in, at least in Nash County, you know, and echoed the same thing, well, this needs to be a collaborative effort, we need to all be on board. You know, we feel a little bit like the lead agency in a sense because of, you know, I think we're funding somewhere in the middle of half a million to seven hundred thousand dollars currently in terms of charities to try to take care of, or at least address that need. And we certainly understand that's just scratching the surface. And I think that's the fear factor, right? I mean, it keeps growing, the problem keeps growing, our expenses keep growing, and, and we're not even the ones supposed to be charged. So I, I think, I think we need to probably, you know, be able to caucus and really understand, you know, how to best choreograph all this, and we'd love to have somebody also at the table with us. And I know you're with us, but we need somebody else.
No, we, of course, we, we get that. I, I think, you know, my, my main goal to be here today is to answer questions, to let you know that, you know, this is something that, obviously, I think you all know we're committed to it. You know, we had a whole group of us come to Wilmington, let you know how important this is to all of us. And, and again, kind of the appeal that we're just getting these conversations started, and we would love for you all, if we, if we need someone maybe to back us up in a conversation as we try to build this coalition out from the city of Rocky Mountain. And, and, and just to reiterate the importance, at, at least step number one, getting that plan in place, because I think that's the catalyst for us to identify deeper, who's doing what, get the plan in place, and to look at who can we continue to bring into this coalition so we can address it. Because you're right, Mayor, we are seeing things escalate, and we know this is a community-wide challenge.
Yes, it is.
We, we certainly appreciate that. And we, and we want you to know how committed we are to this, and that we really do, we understand, and we're ready to move forward and to continue building this, this coalition together.
Any other questions?
And thank you, and any way I can help, and it's going to let me know.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And I'm happy to attend, you might not want me to, but I'm happy to attend. You might have to keep your mouth shut, but happy to listen.
Thank you, appreciate that, appreciate that. Thank you all very much.
Okay, but thank you for coming, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Any other matters to be brought while we're in open session? Now, we now go into closed session for property acquisition, returning client privilege, and personnel. So, packets?